Well, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and get this meeting started. It is now 5:30. At this time, I'm going to ask Judge Alloway to give him a quick moment of prayer.
Sure you will join me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to get together and provide leadership to the community that you have created for us. God, we appreciate the opportunities that are afforded to those of us in this community, and we pray in the wisdom of our leadership. Go with us as we move throughout the coming months, and be with us in all that we do. In your name we pray.
Amen.
And while we're standing, both Jerry, we can go ahead and leave it in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Maggie Seager.
You want to cheer?
All right, that brings us down to amendments to the agenda. We've got a few of them that Lisa has added to the agenda, and it wasn't her fault. I will let Jerry take the complete blame for it. All right, we're going to, if it's so being, with the other two commissioners. Item A, we'd like to add the lighting of the presentation for the lighting up of the courthouse in town. Item B, add the exhibit from the City of Jasper to annex partial 029A064-004 under the new business on item A. C, we add the custom pumper supertanker bid opening under action items D. And D, add resolution for organizing ready pickens under action items G. E, we're going to add a resolution to appoint a dangerous dog officer under action items item H. F, we're going to have to add a resolution amending Article III, Chapter 14 of according ordinances under action items, not only item I. And also, we just had the last one that's come in here off a quick. We've got to add the bids for the chipper truck to the agenda. That'll be item J under action items. Anyone have a question on all those? I kind of went kind of fast on those. We'll get through it pretty quick.
Jay right now is executive session.
Pardon?
Jay right now is executive session. I'm still doing the executive session. Decide to move it down one.
Okay, yeah, we'll move it down one on the executive session. Move the executive session to be K instead of J. All right. Any other questions or comments you have on doing those? May I get a movement a second to approve the agenda?
No movement.
Have a movement a second to approve the agenda and further discussion? None being all that favor, none of us saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. Item is approved. Now, that brings us down to the employee recognition. This is, of course, an item that Ms. Becky Denny has been doing for us, but I don't think Mr. Young is here. Is he planning on coming?
He is working.
He is working. What lesson did he have? Well, Ms. Denny can, if you want to, you will accept this in his behalf, then we will get it, y'all will get it delivered to him.
Thank you.
And say, "Thank you very much."
Thank you.
All right. We're going on down to item number seven under consent agenda. We sign proclamations for the following. Number one, the Pickens' first week of March 20th through the 27th. Now, as I go down through these, if anyone wants to read these proclamations, they are on the website, aren't they? Yes. All right, thank you. Item number two, Rock Creek Manor Residence Day, which was on March the 26th. Child Abuse Awareness Month, which is month of April. The Sexual Assault Awareness Month, which is a month of April also. And then we have the National Safe Digging Month. That's for your 811 numbers scenarios. That's for the month of April also. And then we have the Crime Victims' Right Week, which is April 8th through the 14th. And then we have, the last one is Health Fair Day proclamation, which is going to be on April the 28th. All right. Now, that brings us down to item number eight under old business, under lighting for downtown They have sent a tentative proposal. We just got it the other day. I think y'all have got a copy of it in y'all's book there. But anyway, the Christmas tree, the 18-foot panel Christmas tree, Luxed Lighted with a C7 LED commercial grade lamps, including the four-foot 3D Star Topper. Regular price is $9,500. They are offering a special for $7,125. Now, that's good through April the 30th. And Kim, if you're, we have, we bought that tree that we have now back in '07, '08.
Somewhere in there.
And didn't you tell me the last time you took it down, it was about on its last limb?
Yes, that's right.
The tree that Kim was talking about is one we bought. It's 18-foot, and that particular model tree at that time was $1,000 a foot, so that was $18,000. Now, what they're offering here is the 18-foot Christmas tree for $7,125, lighting included. And I would recommend, I'm going to recommend, that we might take this into consideration. But let me finish the rest of it here real quick. And also, they need to have a 24-inch custom riser drum to go underneath it. That's another $3,200, $3,250. Then, of course, they got the deluxe ornament package, approximately 300 to 325 ornaments, four, six, and eight-inch commercial grade chaplains ornaments, unattached, for $1,500. Now, they are offering a professional installation, take-down, and storage of the 18-foot Christmas tree, Star Topper, 24-inch riser drum, attached ornaments, includes delivery to and from Jasper. Power must be available at all times, dah 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 dah. $7,500 annually, that's just to take the thing up and down. The general specification of warranty documents is enclosed. The proposal, terms and conditions, and 50% deposit is required to confirm order. And this, of course, was prepared by Lori Fullwood, who is part owner in the Lori at Universal Concepts.com. And y'all remember the proposal that Mr. Dunn had on that. Now, I would recommend, and maybe, let me make a recommendation before we go further on this thing. We're going to have to have a tree. We know we're going to have to have a tree. Okay. I would like to see us, if we could, go ahead and make the recommendations. Go ahead and at least get the tree locked down for $7,125, since it's on sale, if we can get it, get that locked down. I wouldn't approve that. But the rest of this, I would like to run in an order that we could think about the rest of this until the next meeting, give us time to look at the lighting for downtown around the courthouse and all that, before we approve the whole package. But at least we can prove this right here, the $7,125. Ms. Harvey, do we have enough money in hotel, motel tax to approve just that $7,125 to lock the tree down? Okay. So, what would be, my, can I make a move? I'd like to make a move that we approve Ms. Harvey to pay 50% of the $7,125 to get this price on this tree locked down. And then, once the tree arrives, we'll pay the other 50% of that, and then gives us 30 days to talk about the rest of this, to see if we can go further to that point. So, I'm going to make a move to that. Is that a little confusing? Don't understand?
I understand.
All right.
Do we have a discussion?
We can have a discussion. Now, we can wait till somebody wants to...
I just wanted to give you one update. Jack texted me late this afternoon, or just a little while ago, and he checked with Lori, and she will do a first-time installation for $5,200. But still, I think that's a lot. I just wanted to give you that information.
Yeah. Well, we might discuss from here on down this next month, you know, as we go home and look at this thing, to keep getting more questions with Mr. Dunn. But I think we need to at least go ahead and lock that price down, because we're going to have to have a tree, one way or the other, and that's less than half of what we've given for the original tree there. So, I'm going to put a move on the floor that we go ahead and accept it like I originally proposed it. Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favor, none of us saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. All right, that part has been approved. All right. Let's see here. That brings us out of old business. So, now we're going to new business. Just for your information, exhibit from the City of Jasper to annex partial 029A064004. It's 118 acres, located at 364 Shark Top Ridge Road. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, that's that property going up Burnt Mountain to the left, Roy?
To the right.
To the right, I'm sorry. Going up Burnt Mountain to the right. And it's some of the original Pickett family.
Correct.
So, they want to, here's the math. So, they want to take that property and annex it. The city has sent us this as courtesy of course, that this is what they would like to see happen.
I was thinking it was on the left, too. Just looking at this map, it looks like it sits between Shark Top Road and over Burnt Mountain Road.
Okay.
Over Burnt Mountain is the road. If you turn to go in the chapel and go out there, that's the other side of the ridge.
So, it's straight, it's on the right from there?
It's on the right from what we call Burnt Mountain Road. Going up the mountain to Hunter's Ridge, it's on the right.
Okay.
Do we need a move in a second to approve that? Okay. I need to, I guess we're asking for a move in a second to go ahead and, I guess, approve the city's request that they are able to take this property in for annexation. Have a move? Do I get a second?
Second.
Have a move in a second, any further discussion? Other than the zoning request for this annexation is R1 single-family residential. A map of this parcel is attached, so they must be planning on building some residential properties in there. All right, any further comments? None being, we have a move in a second. All that favor, none of us saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. That property has been approved for annexation. All right. That's under new business. Okay, that brings us under item number 10, under financial report. Ms. Harvey, I'm going to turn it over to you at this time.
The report that y'all have is for the period ending March 30th, and that is three months, or 25% of our 2018 fiscal year. So, the budgets, the expenditure budget should be 25% or less. The revenue budgets, the total general fund revenue collected was $3,099,111, and that's For the general government functions, the expenditures for that period were $730,948, and that's 18.77%. For judicial, the expenditures were $759,782, and that's 22.09%. Public safety functions, the expenditures totaled $3,289,832, and that is 24.77% of their budget. Then I'll go to public works, and public works expenditures were $769,509, and that's The health department, senior center, and the MATHS program expenditures were $97,234, and that's 12.03%. For culture and recreation, expenditures were $223,778, and that's 23.15% of their budgets. For housing and development, expenditures were $164,770, and that's 25.01. So, the total general fund expenditures are $6,35,854, and that's 23.18% of the budget. So, that, it's about 1.8% under the requested budget, or the required budget at the end of March. For the enterprise funds, the water department expenditures were $291,740, and that's 13.61%. For the airport, expenditures were $95,551, and that's 21.69%. Let me mention just a couple of things here on this page. For public works, their, the road department, their budget right now is at 27.41. They had a large capital outlay expenditure that has already been paid this year. It was like $170,000, I think. So, that will skew his budget for two or three months, his operational costs, so within budget though. And it's the same for planning and development. They had a vehicle budget and capital outlay, and that has already been paid in January. So, that budget should even out as the year goes on.
What about this security court? That's at 32.3.
Yeah, that is, we are doing some, I think the grant fund and some of those budgets, some of those amounts that were budgeted in the correct grant fund through payroll, they have been being charged to the 100 fund, so we're uncorrecting that in general entries. That will even out.
And then this one down here, the probation under, is that? Probation drug use fund?
That's a special revenue fund, and it's, that's paid by court order. It's called the Subs Abuse Prevention, the SAT fund. That's paid by court order. It's not really general fund, but it has the general fund number. So, any questions on that? I do have a request for a budget amendment. I left this, these sheets of paper, these two bullets. What this is, is the EMA received revenue from Gina Homeland Security in the amount of $19,813. They received that in January, and the revenue was approved back to fiscal year '17. But the expenditures are going to be in the issue's budgets, and that's for signs, and it also paid half of the weather warning system at the Parks and Rec. So, I'm asking to increase the EMA capital outlay budget by $14,813, and increase the Parks and Rec small equipment budget line by $5,000. And that will decrease our contingency by $19,813.
And that ticked the item, I think, that's completely operational. I think that's what they made the announcement for last year.
And that leaves a total of $457,000 in contingency.
I make a move that will give them as far as the ability to make this correction on the amendment to the general fund. So, have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favor, none of us saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. That has been approved. Thank you, Ms. Harvey. All right. That brings us down to rezon request. Do we have, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm going to back up a second. That brings us down to action items under action item A, the approved minutes. Number one, the regular board minutes, excuse me, the regular board meeting on March the 15th, 2018. You've all had got a copy of them and read them. I didn't find anything wrong. I need an approval, to approve those minutes, please. Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favor, none of us saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right. Then we had on item number two, had a work session meeting on April the 5th, 2018. Again, you've all had the opportunity to take a look at them. I didn't see anything, any corrections that I didn't see, y'all. If not, I need a move in a second to approve that, those minutes. Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favor, none of us saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. And of course, item number three, we had a call meeting on April 5th, 2018. There again, that was in regard to that tan. I need a move in a second to approve those minutes, please. Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being, all that favor, none of us saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right. That brings us down to item C, the approval of the Carlin Road Fire Station bid. We've had two bids on that particular fire station. One of them from Mr. Jimmy Stewart Construction on 330 Dean Mill Road, which come in at $382,386.70. And then we had another bid come in by Mr. Brandon Pettit of Place Construction Group. His come in at $424,205. We have looked and looked over both bids, compared both of them. Mr. Stewart is approximately $40,000 cheaper. Everything seems to be eggs for eggs in comparison. I'm going to make a recommendation that we go ahead and approve the Mr. Stewart's construction of the fire station on Carlin Road. So, I'm going to make a move to that point. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? On the discussion part, did Mr. Stewart say when he was going to get started on this project, or did either one of them say when they were going to start?
Neither one said if we're not awarded. We're waiting on the vote.
Okay.
Neither one of them showed up.
Okay.
Who would have wanted to be on?
All right. Any further discussion? Ms. Harvey, you have any, I know you'd like to, it'd be a whole lot less expensive, but it's what it is. Do you have any questions on that tick for bid process? All right, have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favor, none of us saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right. Let's see here. The next item D, approve of 1,500 GPM custom pumper and a 3,000-gallon supertanker bids. We had four companies bid on these, actually, we had, you had six companies bid on these, didn't you?
Well, we had, we sent out nine total packages. We had several that came back that decided they were a bit on. And if I'm not mistaken, we had three on the pumper and two on the supertanker.
That's correct.
Bid, carry me.
I got it right here. It comes after the custom pumper. We had four bids on the custom pumper. Four companies tried, tried in emergency vehicles, Rosenbauer Southern Emergency Products, Fearless Flames Inc., and Farline Inc. he won. The tried come in at $439,700. Rosenbauer come in at $455,769. Fearless Flame, $474,011. And then Farline Inc., $515,828. Now, that's on the custom pumper. And Sloan has, Ms. Elrod has reviewed all these, and you want to stay with the Triton emergency vehicle, which was actually the lowest bid on that particular package, or $39,700. I need a move in a, I'm going to do these, the two a little separate here, since it come out with two separate items. I need a move in a second to approve that lowest bid. Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being, none of us saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right, then we come back to the 3,000-gallon supertanker bids. One of them from Freedom Fire Equipment. We had option one and option two. Option one was $244,325, and then option two was $239,325 on Freedom Fire Equipment. What was the two differences in the tick for option one and two? Do you remember off the top of your head?
The bigger the chassis is the only difference. It was the bigger bill, and that was the $244, and then the Kenworth was $239.
Okay.
That's the only difference.
All right. Then Rosenbauer was Southern, Southern Emergency Products. His bid come in at $295,401. So, you feel like the $239,325 option two with the Kenworth is going to be sufficient? All right, I need a move in a second to approve that, please. Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favor, none of us saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right, both of them have been approved. All right. Brings down to item E, under text minute, the re-adoption of Chapter 54 under timber Mr. Oliver, what's the, give the group a overview of what you're wanting to change on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. The county has had timber regulations since 1997, and the proposed revisions put our county code of ordinances in line with the language found in the official code of Georgia. State of Georgia authorizes counties to require landowners, timber companies, or timber buyers to give notice prior to harvesting timber. This ensures that counties can track ad valorem taxes, as well as roadway access points regarding site visibility and other possible concerns. Pickens County, if our planning and development has an application form, and the requirement per the state is that whoever obtains a county timber harvesting permit, provide us with evidence of a letter of credit or surety bond in the amount of $5,000. Failure to provide notice, any violation may be punishable of a fine of to $500. And again, this just puts us in line with the state language. I sent it to the county attorney and have not received any objections.
Any further questions on that? All right, I need a move in a second to approve the amendment to this Resolution 54. Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favor, none of us saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right. That brings us down to item F, which is a re-upолнment of Mr. Michael White to the DFAX Board, to the DFAX Board. His term runs out on June, well, it actually expired on June the 30th, 2016. The, he has agreed to serve again, if I'm not mistaken. So, y'all, y'all remember who Michael White is. Y'all have any objection to that? I need a move in a second to approve Mr. White to serve another term, please. Move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favor, none of us saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right. All right, then we got a resolution for organizing ready pickens.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to speak to that?
Please. Alan, thank you, Judge Alloway.
Thank you. First of all, this is a collaborative effort between the Emergency Management Agency, Homeland Security Agency, the Board of Commissioners, the public school system, and the Public Board of Health. Since October roughly of 2002, the Federal Emergency Management Agency authorized communities and provided resources for the training of community emergency response teams. Most of the communities around us include Dawson's, Gilmore, Fannin, Lumpkin, and Cherokee have all had community emergency response teams for a long time. There was a swell for it a couple of years ago, and it's just something couldn't get off the ground. Recently, our school system has adopted a pathway at Pickens High School for the, it's for law enforcement, public safety, corrections, safety and security. And as a part of that program, part of the curriculum in that group, or in that class, is a teen CERT program, which is a federally recognized training program as part of that class. In order to qualify and be eligible to offer that class as part of the public school system, you also have to have an organizational structure so that the county has some involvement through emergency management, because in there, if there are grant funds, those grant funds have to fall through the county. The decision Johnny and I have spent a lot of time working together, trying to come up with the best structure to address those issues, and we felt that ready pickens as a council represents the Board of Commissioners, the Public Health Department, the school system, and the community, and the volunteer fire service. One of the things that we see is that this could be another groundswell of an opportunity to provide the training in the community, not only in the schools, but in the community. And by doing so, you increase the number potentially of folks that become involved in our public safety and our community. It's been a long time since we've spoken. It's been a long time since we've spent any time, effort, or energy on that. And I think that this is an excellent opportunity. I'm proud to report that as of this morning, when I was talking to my wife, who will teach that at the high school, she has one hundred and sixty students that are signed up for that class in FY two thousand and eighteen, nineteen at Pickens High School. Which means that if they complete that program, there will be one hundred and sixty young people who are taught first aid CPR, basic fire suppression, basic search and rescue, and be given the opportunity to practice those things on campus at Pickens High School. And so this is the foundational block to give the opportunity to Pickens High School and to this pathway. But it's also an opportunity to do this for the community. I think Sloan can tell you. Sloan and I came from a very different time in Pickens County, when there was a Pickens County Rescue Unit. And many, many years ago, that was the largest volunteer organization in this county. And they did great work. And as paid departments come on, there's very little opportunity for volunteers to get involved. But this is that opportunity. And by supporting this, it allows Johnny next year through HSEEP grants to apply for funding. It also gives us the opportunity to put some effort from county government into it. This is a proactive step and it's something that I think is very important. Johnny and I, at this point, I volunteered to go to instructor school. Johnny and I are going to instructor school next month. Rosie will be going in August. And then hopefully by the fall of this year, we will be offering this program community-wide, targeted in specific communities, but community-wide. And then she'll have a full program at Pickens High School. So we're excited about this. And I think that this is something, again, it's a proactive step and it's something that we don't get the opportunity to do very often.
Thank you, Judge. Any other questions with Mr. Judge Winklin?
I'm excited about it. It sounds wonderful.
With that being said, I need a move in a second to approve this resolution. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, no one but saying aye. No opposed, thank you. Thank you, Alan. Appreciate that. All right. All right. We have a, we have an appointment, a dangerous dog control officer. And again, this falls, Alan, I might have to revert back to you if you can think of it better than I can.
Mr. Chairman, if this okay, I'm gonna cover both items at the same time because one is very pertinent to the other.
All right.
The next item on the list is...
H and I.
Yeah, H and I, the resolution amending Article Three of Chapter fourteen. We've had several situations that have come up and we have found that our ordinance is no longer in compliance with state law. There was a statutory change at the state level, which took away from probate court the designation hearings, or reclassification hearings for dangerous dogs and placed those with County Board of Health. Probate court now has appellate jurisdiction over the Board of Health. But the initial classification, as it is in our current ordinance, says it goes to probate court. Probate court, no longer under the state law, has the statutory authority to handle those. Those go to the Board of Health. So resolution, or excuse me, yeah, resolution amending Article Three under item I is actually the amendment to Article Three clarifying where the position and where the petitions have to be filed. Item H is the appointment of a dog control officer, which addresses who follows through and who is responsible for the enforcement of the dangerous dog in Article Three. What you have is currently, the Public Health Department, Jan Stevens, served as the dangerous dog control officer. We were formed in eighteen fifty-three, so, and I don't know, she'd been around forever. And when she retired from the Public Health Department, the new public health environmental specialist did it because Jan did it. Jan did for a while, and then she came in and she did it. Well, we find out, I believe in probably February, January, February, that public health no longer has the ability or the authority to handle those matters. And so it became necessary for the county now to appoint a dangerous dog control officer for the enforcement of that ordinance and for the classification under that ordinance. At this point, Ms. Lindgren and I have talked, Jim Jones and I have talked about this. And it is the most logical thing, and I believe what the resolution reads now, is to appoint the Director of Animal Control as the dangerous dog control officer and to allow the animal control officers, who are duly appointed by the Board of Commissioner and hired for that purpose and sworn for that purpose, to actually carry out that work. Because they have the equipment, theoretically, they have the training, and they're the ones that are responding to these anyway. So public health will still maintain rabies control, but dangerous dog control will transfer over to the Director of Animal Control as the chief dog, dangerous dog control officer under the state statute and the county ordinance. And so it would fall under their purview now, if you approve this resolution. I'll tell you that there are some training opportunities that I believe probably should be had for this. And I've shared those with Chairman, with the Director. So, but there are some opportunities out there for those. It's very serious things how I built here for the county. And so moving forward will help tremendously in upbanning some of them.
Public health will still be involved in the fact that the skin, as a dog bites, as an animal bites the skin, breaks the skin, then public health is still involved, but just gives the ability that the dangerous dog officer can go through and do something with it.
Article Two and Article Three, yeah. These are two totally separate.
Also, we have made, as me and Judge Winklin have talked, to the fact that, I think it's Cobb County, Cobb County, not the state, but Cobb County is offering, or has offered.
There's actually a national certification program this year in Georgia. It's actually funny enough being held in Georgia. And I've provided those opportunities to Jim Jones and to the Director. Like I said, this is something they've never done before, so this would be very helpful to get them to train and partner to make them that happen.
So, ladies and gentlemen, I need a move in a second to approve this. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, no one but saying aye. No opposed, thank you. All right. That brings us down to bids for the chipper truck. We have got a, we have, the chipper that we have is, has served us well. And it's still operational to a point. It is getting, getting some hours, some mileage. But we had the ability to buy a new, bigger piece of equipment. Henceforth, the truck that we have to pull the one with is a ninety model.
Yes, ninety model Ford.
F six hundred.
F six hundred Ford. That has held up well, but it has getting close to its life cycle or probably past its life cycle. We are, the road department, Kim and Donnie had took and got us some prices on a couple of them. It's hard, these trucks, believe it or not, are hard to find and ready to go, with the warranty and all that goes with them. We had, what, two bids that have come in. This is the lowest of the bids. Both of them pretty well standard. Looking at a, we can see the paperwork in the front with the warranties, with the coming engine, with the air brake scenario, and the truck is heavy enough. But the truck will be utilized not only as a chipper truck to haul the chips when they're pulling the big chipper out there, but the bed itself, the container bed, can be removed and used as a regular flatbed dump truck with a set of sideboards. So it's kind of a, kind of a double use proposal. That particular truck, and least bit on that one, is bed total turnkey ninety-six thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars. And Ms. Fay will explain the financing.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Okay. We did talk about this the other day. I think after y'all already decided to go. But in him's capital outlay budget for equipment, we had two hundred and twenty thousand. He has spent a hundred and ninety-three thousand, that's the big chipper, I think it was, a hundred and seventy. And then what was the other piece of equipment he got this year?
Oh, yeah.
So he has twenty-six thousand, eight fifty-five left on that loan. He had twenty-five thousand on the vehicle line that he is willing to forego buying vehicles this year. If we can add those two together. And we're gonna be getting, I think it's around a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from England within the next few weeks, pertaining to the storms from last year, which the majority of that really hit him's expenditure budget last year. And he was still under budget. So I feel like we could allot some of that revenue to his, he'd need about, what was the number?
Forty-three, forty-four.
Twenty-three thousand. Of that revenue bused it on, bused it as revenue and then on his expenditure loan, his capital outlay expenditure loan. And that should take care of the balance on the vehicle. And you said it won't, it probably would not be available until October or something.
The truck, just ordering it now will keep us till probably October before we get the truck in-house.
Possibly September or October sometime.
The other truck, it was, it was, it was a twenty-nineteen, it's a freight liner. It was nearly a thousand dollars higher. But like I said, those things, you can't hardly buy them used. And when you do buy them used, the term used is really underestimated. They are wore out. So that being, that being said, and I think Ms. Fay has explained how we can purchase this particular equipment. I'm gonna, I'll make the move that we go ahead and go ahead and purchase this piece of equipment. Okay. We have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, no one but saying aye. No opposed, thank you. All right. There you go. Thank you very much. All right. And that's gonna bring us down to executive session. Do we need to go into executive session for anything? We are not going to go into executive session. We're gonna wait and pedal some of that to the work session in two weeks, if y'all are amenable to that. So at that time, we're gonna open up on item number twelve, guests and comments. Do we have any comments from the crowd? No?
We had a comment and we're a guest in, we're one of the county. And I'd like to introduce you to William Danny, who's here with the Golden Rule Youth and Young Adult Leadership. He's a delegate who just returned from a meeting with the governor. And they also met Speaker of the House Ralston. And they were...
I love Casey Cagle.
Casey Cagle came. It was a lovely time. The governor made a presentation to the delegation that William would like to share with the commission. We are so proud. They presented the delegation with a commendation for their work and effort on behalf of National Day of Prayer. And they gave a proclamation to all the counties of Georgia to stop and pause and celebrate this wonderful opportunity with National Day of Prayer, to pray for our nation, to pray for our people, our education bodies, and the fourteen pillars of great community, our veterans, our law enforcement, military, first responders. And William is here.
Now, most of you, of course, know me, especially the commission, as this lovely lady's grandson. But today I come as a member of the delegation to invite you all on May the sixth, at the Big New Terraces, to, you know, join us with the, in the Day of Prayer. And I have Ms. Carbonis, who is a wonderful lady as well. She's been, you know, leading this entire thing along with our lead delegates, Matthew Bearden and Jill Bowlin. And she's passing out flyers to everyone. So it's, it's gonna be a wonderful event. I'm gonna be speaking there. And we have a lot of our other delegates speaking. And I, it's just such a great event because it's a day of prayer. We're speaking to God, getting closer to God and to each other as believers, as the body of Christ. And I just invite you all to come and be a part of that.
And pray for them.
Thank you. I'm happy to be a topic of prayer. I would love to lead in prayer over everyone, and especially our commissioners. So I'll just let this down. If you would all bow your heads. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this day. I thank you for my opportunity to come to this meeting and share your word, Lord. I thank you that we live in a country where we are able to do that, Lord. Lord, I just pray over all three of our commissioners and how hard they work, Lord. And Lord, I pray this in your name. Amen.
Isn't he wonderful?
And he didn't say, can I say one thing? He is going to Reinhardt College and he is gonna be studying music. And this man is the next Pavarotti. I told you, he's amazing.
Alan, I've got one concern about your dog situation. What's that? You think our officers are dangerous enough?
That's what we're doing right there.
Thank you. We're gonna get a picture. Thank you, thank you. Pass these out to everybody.
Come on down. Slide on down this way. How we doing right there?
Why don't we get the girls right around here, the boys, the girls.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, sir.
Oh, Danny, we love you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else have any comments, questions?
Well, we got a ball game to go through.
Take them off. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's about, it's now about seventeen after six. I'm gonna say thank y'all for being here. Y'all have a safe weekend and have a comfortable weekend. Maybe it'll warm up again one of these days. Thank you.